Great, thank you all so much. I'm sorry for the delay and I apologize for any inconvenience. We're gonna get going. Our moderator for this evening is Dr. Kim Allen from the Martin Luther King Living History Center. Dr. Allen, I'm gonna give this over to you. Scott Berger is our timekeeper and she'll give you instructions as far as how that all works. I'd also like to point out, I'm taking my candidates, that there are leadership for a lot, a number of organizations here in Richmond are here tonight and so we expect, we expect great things from you guys. Thank you all so much. Also, if you have questions, if you're from the audience, I'll be around with cards. If you've got them filled out, just hold them up and somebody will come by and get them. Thank you.
Fantastic. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, we have candidates here seeking to serve as mayor of Richmond or on Richmond City Council, so we've gathered to discuss some very important issues to our city. This forum is a great way to increase citizen engagement and while providing an opportunity for residents to hear firsthand from our candidates about how they propose to tackle the city's challenges and opportunities. Richmond and our residents, as we know, are faced with many challenges and opportunities whether related to eradicating poverty, educating our young people for the 21st century, regional cooperation, affordable housing, economic development, a dire need for jobs for, for citywide for working families and middle-class families. But not to be a doomsayer, there are plenty of opportunities here in our city as well. And so this is where our candidates come in. So we look forward to hearing your dreams and your plans for our city, for a city that works for everyone, everyone who lives here, who works here, and who plays there. So sincerely, we thank you all for coming this evening. Thank you. And so now to review some ground rules. As the moderator, I will select the order of speakers. Candidates will be allowed two minutes to introduce themselves. Candidates arriving late shall receive this opportunity at the moderator's discretion. Candidates who need to leave early shall inform the moderator at the beginning of the program so that I may give them an opportunity to speak early. And we do have one candidate here who will be leaving a bit early, and that's candidate for the, for the 5th district, and that's Parker Angelus, Angelisto. Angelesto, alright, so he'll be leaving us before the 8:30 hour. Now, after introductions, the moderator will direct a series of questions to groups of candidates with an emphasis on those who are running for the same office. Candidates shall keep their answers to two minutes, and we're gonna be strictly enforcing that. The moderator myself shall select questions turned in by the audience, either for specific candidates or for select groups. All candidates will not be asked the same questions, but of course, they may comment on earlier questions. And at the moderator's discretion, candidates running for the same office may be allowed an opportunity to rebut. So, I will allow her closing statements at the end of the program, time permitting. We hope to get out by 9:30 this evening. And I am the final auditor, and I will keep order during the forum. We have a timekeeper who will hold up signs for you at one-minute intervals, 15 seconds, and then stop. Alright. And with that, we'll get right into our questions here. We'll start off in a race that has multiple candidates. Actually, we'll start off with each candidate giving a two-minute statement. That's what we'll do. We'll start here with Mr. Angelesto.
Thank you. My name is Parker Angelasto. I'm running for city council in the 5th district. I got involved in this race because I've been talking for a number of residents who wanted to see some change in the way our city is responding to neighbors and concerns that we face. I think we really need somebody on city council who's a part of the community, who's working collectively for all of our benefit, who's actually on the ground observing, monitoring, making suggestions on where we can make improvements, at the same time being accessible, somebody who's gonna win our phone calls, somebody who's gonna produce our emails. But that's the basic service that I think we need to have on some council. Beyond that, what I offer to district residents is somebody who is very thorough and thoughtful when it comes to addressing issues. I'd like to make sure that everybody comes to the table, that we work collaboratively, that we provide inclusiveness, and that when there are concerns, and we have neighbors who feel one way, we have neighbors who feel a different way, that everybody's at the table so that we can share our opinions, that we can actually work and resolve and find common ground and implement a solution. On the bigger picture, I think we need to start rebuilding our communities, working together with the police and law enforcement. I'm very committed to making sure that city council is working with our school boards, working with principals of our schools. So really, the future of this city, it's the future of our livelihood in terms of home values, it's the future of seniors getting good-paying jobs, making sure that we're competitive when it comes to jobs and surrounding communities. Very committed to working with that. Beyond that, I'm focused on the parks of the 5th district, as many of you might know, has over 500 acres of parking, and the city council representative of that district needs to be working with the parks of West Park, effectively. So with that, my name is Parker Angelasto, and I'm running for the city council of the 5th district, and I appreciate your support.
I'm Ellen Robertson. I am the current city council representative of the 6th district of the city of Richmond, which is inclusive of Holland Park, White Heights, downtown, south of the River Manchester, and Bellevue, as well as my extended district now including a piece of the VCU campus, as well as all of the MCDVCU campus downtown. I am, I currently served on a city council. This will be my ninth year on city council. I serve as the chairperson of the finance and economic development committee. I also serve as the vice president of Richmond City Council, and I serve on several of the council boards and commissions throughout the city to include the board of tourism, the board of regional planning, and I have also been instrumental in putting together some other boards and commissions to address some of the special interests that we have in the city of Richmond. Gosh, I don't want to fess. I am interested in continuing to serve on city council, and I ask for your vote and your support to continue the work that we currently have in process. I think that the main challenges that we face in the city of Richmond, there are many. Certainly, we have economic development as one of our top priorities that we continue to push to increase the level of revenue that we have in the city, and ultimately have to depend less on your taxpayers' dollars in the process of doing that. We also have a tremendous need to address the poverty of the housing and the community development that is going on in the city of Richmond. And of course, our public education is one of our very top priorities in these districts. Thank you very much for your time, and again, I ask for your support.
I am Bruce Tyler. I am the 1st district councilman. I've been on council since January 2007. When I talk to folks about the issues at hand, it comes down to three things. It comes down to safe neighborhoods, it comes down to great Richmond public schools, and it comes down to creating an efficient, effective government so that we don't drive the middle class out of the city of Richmond. I have the pleasure of serving on the finance committee with Ms. Robertson, and I've been on that committee for the past six years, and I've also served on government operations committee for the past six years. I look forward to the opportunity to serve again. It has been an honor to represent the folks of the 1st district. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Chris Gilbert. I'm the current city councilperson for the 3rd district, which includes neighborhoods in Northside, dinner park, down to Virginia Union University, Chamberlain Avenue, Fourth Road corridors, and also includes Gilford Court and Newtown West. I appreciate you all putting this forum together and giving us the opportunity to speak to you about the issues that face the city. Three things that I believe that are most important for the city are, excuse me, public safety, public education, and neighborhood revitalization. I do believe these issues are personal to me in that my father was a homicide victim when I was a teenager. I know the incredible pain that public safety, the importance that that brings to a family, to a neighborhood, and our sense of safety. No economic development plan is going to survive under the, under a weight of a public safety problem. Yes, we still have one, but when I ran for council eight years ago, we had 94 murders in the city of Richmond that year. We have significantly less than that now, and I think that was a commitment of myself and colleagues to put additional police officers on the street and confront that issue head-on. So I'm very proud of the legacy that we've left there. I'm a first-generation college graduate. I know what a difference that made for me and the opportunities it gave me. I wanna work very hard for Richmond Public Schools. I'm the chair of the education and human services committee and am determined to increase our communication with Richmond Public School Board and the school administration. And finally, I worked during the day at the Virginia Housing Development Authority. I've worked really hard on neighborhood revitalization and look forward to doing that at the city level. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Charles Samuel. I'm the current 2nd district city councilperson. It has been a true honor to serve for the last three years. I ran for city council originally because I believe in ordinary Richmonders could make a difference if we're willing to do one simple thing. Not top-down government where I tell you what we're gonna do. Not government where whoever I'm in front of, I just agree with them, yes, you're right, and then do whatever I wanna do. I believe government has to be by the people, for the people. That means consensus building. We have to start by getting all the affected parties to the table. That's true whether or not we're talking about the school board, city council, and the mayor trying to find a budget solution. That's true whether or not there's a parking problem on West Broad Street. You have to lead by building consensus. Before I came on to city council, I was a Supreme Court certified mediator, and I could see the difference in people's lives both then and now when you truly have a solution that has buy-in from the affected parties. And there's some examples of that that we've been able to accomplish in the 2nd district. I've held a series of charrettes, not only for the boulevard and the surrounding areas that was very well received, and we now provide that to developers before they start their development project, so they know what the city and the neighborhoods are willing to accept. We've also done that in the Harbor neighborhood down Robinson Street, where we wanna make sure that the people who have to live, work, and play there had a major role in what goes on in our neighborhoods. I worked with the city administration, the businesses, the affected residents to create the city's first arts district in its history. It's a wonderful vision where we're actually able to get the best of both worlds, both the small and the large district all in one, and I couldn't be happier about that. Lastly, with Mr. Gilbert helping pass unanimously a non-discrimination policy that includes not only the federal protected, sorry, section, but also transgender, the LGBT community. Thank you all for your help. I look forward to answering your questions later.
Good evening. I'm Mike Ryan, and I'm running for mayor. I wanna frame my remarks around a quote attributed to John F. Kennedy. What he said is, "Once you accept second place when first is available, you have a tendency to do that for the rest of your life." It's my belief, and the belief of the people that signed my petition to get on the ballot, for far too long in the city of Richmond, when it comes to transportation, jobs, infrastructure, or fighting poverty, that we have accepted second place, and oftentimes, we pat ourselves on the back and say, "Good job." I'm here to say we need to raise the bar. State auditor has determined that we have the most expensive city hall to run in the state of Virginia, and there's nobody even close to beating a second place. On a per-capita basis, it costs us $10 million more dollars to run our city than it does to run the city of Norfolk. $10 million more dollars. That's money that could go to scholarships for kids, that's money that could go to fighting poverty, that's money that could go to creating jobs. The three things I wanna focus on are jobs. We can't talk ourselves out of poverty. Forty percent of African-American families in Richmond live at or below the poverty line except by President Obama. Forty percent. We have to grow our private sector and our job base, and that's gonna also conclude a segment about transportation. Second of all is skills. Only half of our students take the SATs, only half, and they finish with a score of 400, which is 25% below the college level. The last thing again is financial responsibility. We can't leave $10 million on the table, continue with waste and bureaucracy. I'm here to tell you, we believe that the next four years and the future is about a paradigm shift of accepting first place and saying no more of the second place. Thank you.
My name is Johnny Walker, and I'm a son of Richmond, born in dinner park on the Northside, product of Richmond Public Schools, finished Thomas Jefferson High School, won the University of Richmond, MBA University of Richmond. I love the city. I'm running for public office for the first time against the president, president of the city council, because I think we can do better. I've got a seven-point platform that I think will move the city forward. First of all, and what's primed me in my top priority, is Richmond Public Schools. We've got to get our public schools back on track, we've got to make sure that they have the resources that they need to do the job. We can't have our teachers making 12% less than the counties did, when we have a much difficult, more difficult job teaching our kids than the county, than the county school kids did. Secondly, we need to focus on making Richmond, looking at it from a metropolitan area, not just the city of Richmond, but in Racco, Chesterfield, we gotta bring those folks to the table to collaborate with us on issues that aren't city-alone issues, but are metropolitan issues. For example, right now, we have the working for the city of Richmond who wanna work, but they cannot get transportation in certain parts of Chesterfield and in Racco County. The board of supervisors in those counties will not collaborate with Richmond to get the buses there, and we've done nothing to focus on that. My opponent's been in office almost a decade, he's done nothing on that. We've gotta focus on that. Number three, at one time, the city of Richmond, and remember this now, Richmond is what? The capital of Virginia. There were more jobs seven years ago in the city of Richmond than in Racco or Chesterfield, and doesn't that make sense? What is Richmond, the capital? What's in Richmond? State jobs. So you'd expect that to be the number-one employer in the, in the metropolitan area, but no more. Virgil has taken in Racco County, and Racco County has more jobs than the city of Richmond. I know many of you can remember when the city jail for Racco and the Metropolitan Building for Racco wore a main street. Thank you.
Pardon me if you can't hear me. I actually am a high school football coach, so I was screaming a lot last night. My name is Jimmy Hart, and I'm running for 8th district council office. Reason I'm running for office, because I represent a demographic that I feel has been left out, and that's the age between 30 and 40 in this city, who, by talking to a lot of them, feel that their, what they say doesn't matter. So what I'm here for is to help bring you all their problems and what their solutions are, and open up a dialogue that maybe that all of us on a whole can, can come to a table and, and get to an agreement. I'm also a proud, proud, proud of Richmond Public Schools, and that's one of the things that I look at by being a security officer, working in Richmond Public Schools. I get to see these young people every day who look, and most of them think that they do not have a way out, and it's difficult to sit there and watch them and say, "Hey, you're more than what you, you are, what people think you are." That's really one of the main reasons that I'm running. I'm also running because I come from a generation where I remember, bro, downtown had a lot of shops, a lot of shopping, where we could do, come down and enjoy a damn town, and I miss that, and there's still quite a few of us that do miss that. So that's another reason why I'm running for city council. My name is Jimmy Hart. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Marty Jewell, what's left of it. I represent the 5th district very proudly. It's a wonderful district. It's not too rich, it's not too poor. It is the single district that's evenly black and white, wonderful neighborhoods, and I'm very proud to serve there. I've been bumbling around this town for a long time, and there are so many areas that need improvement. It's difficult to determine where, where to start, but I think we will agree that whether you're talking about national or, or local, it's still the economists doing it. Nobody's minding the economy in this city. I don't even know the name of the economists for the city. Maybe we farm that out too. We've got 25% and rising poverty, and I challenge anyone in this room, please tell me, if I needed to find employment services, where would I go? Tell me. We've, we've, we've got, we've got so much to do. We're not marketing ourselves very well, as the gentleman just mentioned, so that our county partners, our county neighbors are eating our lunch. We've gotta build an economy, and yet we've got no goals, objectives, timetables, benchmarks put in front of this administration whatsoever. They're being allowed to just laddy-dod do as they choose. We just, the auditor, and I contend, we got the best auditor in America, I'll say it every chance I get. This guy, this guy, the first week of April, found $15 million of un-audited, unbilled, and uncollected personal, commercial personal property tax, never even sent out. So, there's plenty to do. I wanna continue to help. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lee Schumake, and I'm running for the district city council, resident of Woodland Heights, running in order to put some focus on much of what we've heard tonight already. My platform includes public schools, public infrastructure, public safety, economic development, and finally, bringing this city to a point of being competitive. We've been crippled thus far by the inability to compete effectively with the regions around us. We have to do it. There are 15 minutes in any direction. We just simply have to streamline, tighten the belt, get in there. We need to grow our tax base. We can't do it. We can't attract people unless we really become competitive. That involves a lot of things we're gonna talk about tonight, for instance, the water rate issue, tax rate issues, meal taxes, all of those things come into play with that. I've actually spent this week hearing from city departments, I've heard their concerns. I think we need to focus on that. So part of my platform is, this is a big package, and it requires full-time representation. I'm the person that offers that to the 5th district. I retired from my business, spent 30 years in the corporate world, spent 10 years leader of Woodland Heights, which is my neighborhood, 800 households strong. Marty will attest to the fact, we're pretty feisty, we like to get stuff done.
Fighting fit.
Fighting fit. During my tenure, we planted 250 trees through the neighborhoods, we brought traffic improvements, we've been before ABC boards to stop liquor licenses for problematic locations, just a whole host of things. And I grew to love that work coming from a community. I'm also president of Friends of Forests Park, have a little vine, for open space and green space. So those leadership roles have really inspired me to come and say, "I'm ready to lead the 5th district and contribute whatever I can to the city as a whole." Thank you.
Hi, I'm Erin Delp, and I'm running for 3rd district city council. I'm a social worker in the city, and I see a lot of young people coming out, and they're looking for jobs, they're getting out of high school, and they can't get to the jobs. They don't have the transportation. And then I have to look over the bus schedule with them and try to figure out a route where they can get to some locations where there are jobs. It saddens me that as I've watched the city address problems, it seems as though they're only addressing the conditions that are caused by more systemic problems, and some of our systemic problems are poverty. We need to address the poverty while continuing to address the acute situations. We need to make long-term plans in order to address the systemic issues that affect our communities. And that's why I'm running for a city council. Thank you.
My name is Dawn Page, and I'm running for 8th district city council. I'm currently the chair of the Richmond City School Board. I am a proud part of Richmond Public Schools. I was raised in the Southside. I'm very familiar with the issues that have been plaguing our district, in the city, far too long. In this coming election, we must be critical in choosing our leaders. Because the 8th district, we have been neglected as it relates to services that the citizens of that district that they so desperately need. I will be the voice for the people. I will advocate and support for a stronger education, because education impacts everything. Education impacts our workforce, economic and community development. But we must build on a sound and sustainable public investment that will benefit the city as well as the citizens that we serve. Again, I thank you for this opportunity, and I will appreciate your support as 8th district city council candidate. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Michelle Mosby, and I am running for 9th district city council. I began this journey to run for city council because I was truly concerned. I was concerned about our schools, our youth, concerned about our economics, our community, and I was concerned that I didn't feel like we had representation that was equally as concerned. I am a 9th district resident. I live in the district, and I'm proud to be in the district. And I walk through the district, and I've gotten to know the people in the district. And I believe that the only way that you can represent the district is if you are someone that is in the district that they can talk to, they can discuss the fact that they're having issues in the district. You have to be comfortable in the district, you have to be someone that your young people can relate to. I walk through my district, and if I see a young group of children, I ask them, "Are you registered to vote?" Because we have to prepare our youth for the future. Whether, whether we like it or not, they're headed to our future, and if we have not prepared them in schools, if we have not prepared them for life, if we have not prepared them for the workforce, then we're gonna have a problem on our hands when the next group of people come in and try to take our Medicare, try to take our things from us if we have not trained the next group to fight for us. So we've gotta get in there and get in our, in our, in our neighborhoods and in our districts, and work with our youth, work to get them some jobs, get our economics up to par, so that our city can be the tier-one city that we're, we're wanting it to be. The only way that we can do that is if we have it on the Northside, the Southside, the Eastside, the Westside. We're not tier-one if it's only on one side. We have to be a whole city, and, and our whole city has to represent who we are. I'm represented by the city of Richmond, I'm represented by the whole entire area, and I think that we're gonna have to work together to make those things happen, and that's why.
Do you wanna give Mr. DeRidore a chance to introduce himself to us?
We want to give Mr. DeRidore a chance to introduce himself to us.
Thank you very much, Doctor. My name is Charlie DeRidore. I'm a little bit late because I was in the Crusade of Voters and their endorsement process. I'm sorry. I'm 48 years old. I'm married to Ann. I'm pediatric neurosurgeon at VCU, and we have three children. I live in the fan. I'm from Richmond. Been around here all my life, and I love this city. I love Richmond. And I look at the city, and I, I see so much potential, and the word's been used so often, it makes me sick. We, as a community, have to get together and work on the problems that, that exist that seemingly aren't being focused on. Right now, the auditor has told us that there's between $50 and $75 million in savings in the budget, and yet many of those auditor's reports have not gone up for review or for, for, for implementation. If we were to get that money, we could fix our streets, we could fix our sidewalks, we could reallocate those funds to give our teachers the raises they haven't gotten for five years, our police officers with pay raises they haven't gotten for five years, the firefighters that haven't gotten the pay raises for five years. We can make this city great. And the second district historically has been a powerhouse in the city, and I look forward to working for the citizens as a full-time City Councilperson. And this I will tell you, if elected, I will take my storefront office on Robinson Street and turn it into the second district City Council office. And so I look forward to having some discourse this evening, and thank you for having me here.
Thank you.